Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, February 3rd, 2025. This is a continuation, sorry, this is a meeting of the Sherborn Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight, we are continuing the public hearing on the application of Phoenix Partners Brushhill LLC for a comprehensive permit pursuant to provisions of Mass Law General laws, Chapter 40B for a lot, eighteen Brushhill Road. I believe the applicant team is here and there has been some, I think, significant updates in the last few weeks since we last met. So Bob, I don't know if you want to update us all on sort of where we are.
Yeah, I mean, I think that since we last met, I'm not sure there's been a, well, I'm trying to, when did we last meet? Was it a couple of weeks ago? Was it?
Yeah, you've, I think you've received Stan Tech's most recent.
Right, right, right. So actually, I don't, the, yeah, that's, that's right. That's the biggest news, I think, is that we spent three hours with the Board of Health, our engineers, myself and Paul, and, you know, talked a lot of, a lot of different things. And as you know, we we are, as you know, Zach, but perhaps other people don't, we agreed to raise the system by a foot. And that was something that kind of felt, I think, like a compromise between ourselves and the Board of Health. And they have subsequently met for another three hours this past Friday. I was in attendance, but I did not participate. And they have sent you a memo with their thoughts about the waiver requests that we made, and I'll let those, of course, speak for themselves. But I would say that's probably the most significant activity. We did have conversations with the neighbors, with the Butters, as I reported to you last time. We have had further communications, but I think it's best to kind of leave that as a work in progress and not really germaine to the, to the meeting tonight. And I think that's about what I have to report. And I guess with regard, I'll just say what I said last time, which is we would like to go forward with the plan as presented. There have been discussions about the possibility of a move in, in two of the homes, the, a move in the location of two of the homes, which would not, other than the obvious, you know, waistlines and water lines and things like, things like that, would not have a significant impact. Or what I would say is a material impact on the Title V application and the Title V system. There will be a few minor things moving around if that change does take place. But I think, as I said last time, that if the change does take place, we will come back to you, the ZBA, with a request to modify the plan, assuming that it has been either is in the process of being approved or is approved. Obviously, if you deny it, then we won't bother with that exercise. But, and if necessary, we'd go back to the Board of Health with regard to any issues that implicate the Title V application, not, of course, the local regulations. We would come back to you and discuss those as the process directs us to. And I think that's all I have to report unless somebody wants to remind me of something I've left out.
No, I think the septic was the biggest update. I'd rather you tell us in your own words than me try to sum it up. I'm not as close to the issue as you, and so I appreciate that. Daryl, I don't know if you have any sort of comments on the Board of Health's perspective on where we are. You know, I think we're nearing the end of this public hearing. So I just want to hear sort of your perspective and make sure we're we're all aligned on what Bob said. Daryl, are you available? Or I don't know if she's still on.
Yes, I am. I, I hope our memo captured it all. I don't think I have much to be on that unless you have questions.
Jean, did we get the memo circulated to everyone? Just, I know it's available, but did we push it to the board? I don't know.
I'm pretty sure I sent it to the board.
Board members, do you have any questions for, for Bob or Daryl on the septic? You're unmute, right?
I don't think I do. I just want to play back for Daryl and Bob what I think I'm hearing, because I think I'm hearing it correctly, which is that the new plan is okay with with the Board of Health and with Tetra Tech. The guts of it being raising the system a little bit, adding that barrier and a few other details. And then Daryl's group did a good job walking us through how we should waiver that to get it inside the, the regulations. And so what I think I'm hearing from Bob is that's all right, that's, that's all correct. And we want the ZBA to approve the modified, smaller project with this new septic plan. How are my ears working?
Yeah, Rick, I, I agree with that. The only kind of further thing I would say or caveat to that is that and this will come as no surprise to anyone, while we agree and are grateful that the Board of Health has recommended to you a couple of the, I think they're what I recall are three kind of major waivers to their regulations that they've recommended, that are they've recommended that you provide us a waiver on the three, what I would say are critical regulations. There's a whole series of things which they comment on, some of which we disagree with substantively, some of which we disagree with more procedurally, I guess I would say. In that, for example, it says several, multiple times in the memo that we will need to come back to the Board of Health. And of course, that's not the way it works with regard to local regulations. We don't come back to the Board of Health. We come back to you, the ZBA. And you take input, of course, from them, but it's, it's kind of procedural stuff. And then I guess the, I just want to make sure that, you know, we've presented a set of plans and we've asked for waivers. They have said, if I understand them correctly, well, they only need these waivers that we're going to recommend to build the project. But obviously, you know, I, sometimes I can't interpret the Board of Health regulations. And sometimes they're interpreted differently from the way I interpret them. And so I just, I kind of want to make sure that we, we have a set of plans in front of you. If we, if you're going to approve the comprehensive permit, we want to make sure that we're going to be able to build it on those plans under your, you know, direction, so to speak, right? Because we don't agree with all of the various things. And lastly, I would say at the end of their memo, they recommend multiple, I guess, they don't use the word conditions, but it seems like that's kind of where they're going. And while some of them I, I agree with, you know, one is one that Michael Lesser also always brings up, which is, well, make a condition that they can't use. I'm paraphrasing here, obviously, but make a condition they can't use fertilizers on the property. Well, I don't use fertilizers on my property. And honestly, I don't really care about whether fertilizers can be used on this property. But I don't like having regulations put on these four homes that aren't in place for the rest of our community. I don't think that's fair. And so I'm pushing back more. It's more of a philosophical pushback than it is something I have any serious concern about. And that kind of goes for the other conditions that they're asking you for, you know, what kind of ice melt we use. Well, I, you know, there, there are bad ice melts and good ice melts, and I hope the folks who live there use the better ones. But I don't think conditions should be applied that aren't in the local regulations today. And that's, that's kind of my take on the conditions at the end of their memo. So, and I think that covers, like, like I said, we're grateful that they have recommended to you, that you provide the waivers necessary to build the project. We really are. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to go with Rick and then Daryl. I'm going to get Rick.
Just, just a follow-up question, which is a problem, but, but also with an easy solution. It is not the board's job to figure out which waivers you need. It's always the developer's job to figure out which waivers that we are needed and list them. So we cannot, in this case or in any other, say, well, regardless of what the local regulations say, we're approving these plans. That's just not appropriate under the statute. Now, the good news is you have excellent outside counsel, and I bet he can probably draft up a, a response letter to the Board of Health saying, our waiver applications are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, just so we have something in our record. But we can't guess and it's not our job.
Well, we've already provided a detailed.
It just, thank you, Rick. And you, you, you pulled the words out of my mouth, so to speak. So I assume that we have all the waivers that you would like Bob to list at this point.
We, we provided to you an updated, it was your suggestion, which was a good one, toward the end of the year that we provide an updated waiver list. We provided that. The Board of Health thinks that waiver list is too broad. As I said, I tend to write the waiver request more broadly because of my experience around the local regulations and the difficulty of interpreting what's, you know, situations. And so that's kind of where we are, Rick. We, we did give you that.
If, if you, if you gave me a list and said, this is our list of waivers, then I'm good. That's all I wanted.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Daryl.
So I think, you know, Bob said pretty much what the point of some of our suggestions that since the project is in flux, discussed that homes may move, that means that the relationship of water lines to sewer lines change, for example. And that is something that the Board of Health has to review on a final set of plans. So that would need to come back before us to determine whether it was Title V compliant. The other the other issues about coming back to the board again was hopefully you understood as I have some voice in it for the Board of Health as the group that reviews these sorts of plans all the time. And for the waivers and the difficulty, we, everyone else who comes before the board provides a specific list of waivers that they need. And that seems to have been doable by other applicants, and that's what we go off of. So we had to look at it and make determinations about which of the myriad of regulations we were going to make recommendations about as they pertain to the plans. And that's what was done in the memo. So hopefully you find that useful. And then the reason for the conditions is that this is a project that does not meet the local regulations. We have very strong reasoning behind our local regulations. And this is also a project that, from the data that we know about the site, this is the largest system that could probably go on the property unless there's data that we haven't seen yet. So it is maximizing what could be done with the, that land. And yet doesn't meet our regulations. And so we were trying to offer some suggestions about what might compensate the environment and the integrity of the groundwater, what other measures might be taken. And that's why we brought it up. Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl. Appreciate the input. Board members, any other questions or comments on the septic?
I don't have any, Zach. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Any, I, I think I'll open it up to public comment. I think we're nearing the end of the public hearing portion of this unless there's other concerns or comments from the board. So we'll open up to the public now. I see Dan just popped on. I don't know if Dan Hill has any comments.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Dan Hill, I'm, I'm an attorney. I represent the Director Butters to the project, the Lauterbacks and the Natals. I, I did want to just kind of echo what Daryl had just said about conditions that the conditions, the purpose of conditions in a 40B project is to mitigate the waivers. So I totally agree with that statement that but for the waiver of various dimensional requirements in the zoning bylaw and so forth, this, this level of density would not be allowable on the site at the, a condition such as limiting pesticides or, or fertilizers and so forth, is just a reasonable way to mitigate against the adverse impact of a, of a waiver. So I just want to set that record straight. Mr. Murchison had made a comment that he is talking to my clients about some mitigation and some compromising that might happen with respect to the project. I can confirm that that's accurate. We are in the process of sharing some ideas, I would say, and we're very hopeful that we can get to a point where my clients are satisfied to the best they can be with, with the project, but it's still, still open and we haven't finalized anything yet. So in that, in that vein, Mr. Chair, I would, I would appreciate the opportunity to be able to provide some draft proposed conditions for the board's consideration. I don't know what your schedule is going forwards. You're going to have another open hearing. But as Attorney Haverty can probably tell you, he and I have worked on several of these types of projects. It's often convenient for the hearing to be, to be left open so that the public can have input on the draft conditions or the decision itself. So just want to throw that out there as food for thought.
Rick, what are your thoughts? You're, you're my procedural attorney. So you didn't know, you didn't know.
I'm, I'm retired. I'm not on anybody's malpractice policy, so I'm not anybody's attorney. But as a former board chair.
I volunteered you for this role, so.
As a former board chair and Dan Hill and Paul Haverty can keep me honest, I think if, if the developer consents to leave the hearing open, there can be the sort of discussions Dan Hill is talking about. Once the hearing is actually closed, again, I believe the two attorneys will correct me if I'm wrong, then the, the public gets to watch us figure out our decision, but they don't get to comment because the public hearing is closed. Dan, Paul, how did I do?
That's right.
I agree.
So I guess the question is, are we, how do, do we enter deliberation phase and leave this open? How, how does this sort of work? Rick, you know, like, you know, in terms of our process. So I'm happy to take input for, you know, conditions and, and such, but, you know, I want to make sure that we're moving along as well.
Right. Well, that, that is a negotiation between you and Mr. Murchison. He, he, he has the legal right to say, well, the heck with you guys. I'm not giving you any more extensions. I demand that you make a decision one way or another. He also has the legal right to say, given all the other things that are going on here. You know, I, I think it's, it's worthwhile to leave it open so that negotiations with the neighbor can come to a conclusion. But he, he does have the right and authority to compel us to make a decision because I, Paul Haverty, correct me, I think we're over time and living on extensions from you guys now, right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Are we allowed to consider conditions that someone submits to the board? I mean, I guess that's the question. So I mean.
Yeah.
Once, once the public hearing concludes, once it's been closed, you're not allowed to take any more input. And you would be at risk if you did take additional input. So my, my recommendation. You, you can't take suggested draft conditions, even if it's by email, once the, the public hearing has closed.
Right. We, we can take them from amongst ourselves.
Correct.
Prior decisions, but we can't take them from third parties, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate that advice in our favor. So I, I would say, you know, Bob, you know, I think we need to give maybe a reasonable time, you know, Dan, a reasonable amount of time, another week or so. But I, I want to close this and move forward. So that would be, that's my personal preference.
And Mr. Chair, I, I mean, if you, if you're inclined to keep it open to allow for suggested conditions to be submitted, would you then be inclined to shorten the time for your deliberation? So that you would already have draft conditions anyways, you know, so if we extend it by 10 days to allow you to have another, another meeting and discuss the draft conditions while it's open, would you agree to, you know, issue a decision within 30 days rather than 40 days? So that the, the ultimate amount of time isn't really being extended.
I generally would be inclined to give you that except for my, my schedule is so bad right now that I to just keep up. So I, you know, I, that is a fair proposal, but I, for me right now, I need as much time as I can get. So that's just, that's just where I am. So.
Oh, that's fair.
Rick.
I was just going to say, the decision time goes by much faster than you think.
Yeah. Having written, having, having voluntarily written one of the first opinions, thanks, Rick. And yeah, it's, I just, I, I can't agree to shorten that time right now. I'm too delayed on enough, on enough things. So Bob.
So I guess, Zach, I, I feel a little bit like the last two weeks have been about, and I think the Butters knew this, have been about gathering their final thoughts. And, you know, I, I think I made it really clear to everyone involved that I wanted, and I thought frankly, you wanted to close it tonight. That was, that was certainly my goal. And I, I understood it to be your goal as well. And I feel like the Butters had the opportunity over the last couple of weeks. And in fact, they asked to make a presentation tonight. And if there were conditions they wanted to suggest, then I, you know, I think it would have been great to get those, get those in. You know, if, if the Butters would, what I, what I'll say is that we have until, under the extension we gave you, we have until Thursday. If the Butters would like to put something together, you know, tomorrow and get it in, and obviously, we're going to want to comment on that and respond to it. You know, can we wrap this up? Wrap this up by Thursday on the timeline that we, we kind of all set out, you know, a month.
Bob, that, that wouldn't work simply because the board would still need to, to meet in a public hearing to formally close the hearing.
So we can, thank you, Paul. Can we close the hearing and start deliberations in the same evening?
Yes.
So I think that's, that would be my proposal is that we give this, we pick the next meeting to essentially close out the public hearing in the first few minutes to deal with whatever may have come in. And then we start deliberations. And I would ask also that the board, you know, hopefully we'll have had an opportunity to see whatever proposed conditions come in before that. But I, I also would ask the board sort of have some, you know, bar napkins of notes of what they think they would like so that we can move forward. How does that sound, Bob and Paul?
Um, so what are we, you know, what are we talking about?
A week. So I think yeah, next week, if, I think next week is probably a good week, the week after, school vacation week. So I'd like to probably, if we were going to theoretically close this hearing out this week, I would like to have, would have had a meeting next week.
Well, how about, how about the end of next week? That, that gives you kind of a week and a half or even a little bit more than that, right?
Jean, I see, Jean, the most important person's hand raised.
You have, you have a meeting scheduled for the 11th next week.
Which is the first day.
Which is, that, that's the, that's the day that ended up working for us, the 11th.
Yeah, the 11th, great.
So why, why, could, could, could we extend this to the 11th if, if Bob and Paul were amenable and then take it up after 41?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
You got, you got a bunch of hands up, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Labby and then Mr. Hill.
Yeah, just with regards to schedule, it would have to be the 11th. I have to travel to Virginia for a military funeral, second half of next week. So I'll be fully out of pocket.
Okay. All right. So the 11th, Dan, is that, I see your hands raised.
Yeah, the 11th works for us and we can get draft conditions to you in advance of that date. But I just want to make sure that, that the applicant understands that once the hearing is closed, even he can't make comments on draft language in the decision. And there can't be any back and forth. So it actually just, it's beneficial to everybody that, that, that be allowed. And if, if he's insisting on closing on the 11th, that is what it is. But it, it just strikes me that it's, it's actually better for the board and for the applicant generally to keep that discourse going on so that that written decision can be as good as it can get. But.
I mean, the goal is, the goal is to close the hearing at the next meeting in short order. If there's comments and discussion needed, we'll deal with it right away. And hopefully we can, we can move, begin the deliberations, I think, is, is, hopefully we can. If not, if we get into, you know, a protracted discussion, then so be it. But that, that is the goal, in my mind, anyway.
Dan, would, would it be reasonable, Dan, for you to get those draft conditions to us by noon on Monday so that we have 48 hours to respond? Is that a fair request on our part?
I, I think so. I, I shouldn't have a problem with it. I would just have to run them.
Actually, that's not 48 hours.
I was checking your math.
Exactly. Any chance by close of business Friday?
That might be harder. I, I got to draft them and then the clients have to look at them. And so I think Monday, Monday morning is probably the best bet.
Okay.
The, the, this isn't going to be a big surprise. It's, they're, they're going to be consistent with what we've been talking about for the last few months.
Rick.
I, I wonder if we could have confirmation from the applicant and his counsel that will be extended through a date after the 11th, please.
Yes.
A couple of days after the 11th, the week.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll get you an extension letter to the 13th or the 14th is Friday. I'll give you an extension letter the 14th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we, do we need to vote on the extension or is that just going to? Okay. So I think we have a game plan. We are going to meet on the 11th at seven with the intent of going over the submissions of conditions from the Butters and closing the public hearing, getting deliberations on this project. Any comments or questions from my board?
Would you like a motion?
I would.
Just a, just a quick question, just so I understand what we're doing. Will there be the ability for us or anyone else to speak on the 11th?
Yes, in the beginning part of the hearing. It'll just be the rest of.
But we don't anticipate a long session. We don't anticipate a long public session that night.
That, that's not my anticipation, no. It should be short, I think. Just so we have an opportunity to, for you to respond publicly to any of the proposed conditions and move on.
I have a motion if you'd like.
I would.
I move that the ZBA continue the hearing for Brushhill Homes to Tuesday night, February 11th, 2025, 7:00 PM, based on the developer and council's representation that they're going to extend the time period through, through the 14th. That's my motion.
Seconded.
I'll give it to Tom. Vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Aye.
For Labby.
Labby, aye.
Novak.
Aye.
McBride, aye, continues to the 13th. We'll have a meeting on the 11th, the 13th.
Thank you.
And the second motion, I believe.
To adjourn?
That would be the one.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, Grand Exalted Chair, I, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Great. Vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Fitch, aye.
Labby.
Labby, aye.
Novak.
Novak, aye.
Bright, aye. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you on the 11th.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you all.
Uh, good evening, everyone. It is uh, February eleventh uh, at seven P M uh, Eastern Time. And this is the uh, Sherborne Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, this is a continuation of the public hearing of forty-one North Main Street Pine Hill Residences. Uh, this is a remanded. Uh, remanded um, uh, sort of uh, public hearing, which is already denied to Hack and um. So that is, that's where we are now. I, I apologize, I don't have the sheet in front of me. I just checked into my hotel, so I'm a little, I'm a little late to the game tonight. Um, so uh, at that request, though, I think there's been some new developments um, for forty-one North Main. And uh, I also know that my uh, board member uh, would like to uh, say a few words, so Rick, I don't know if you want me to sort of. Open the uh, uh, Gene, your hand is raised.
Um, just to, just, it's also um, a continuation of Brush Hill.
Uh, yes, we will do that. Thank you, appreciate the reminder. So I know there's been a bunch of developments, Rick. I know you asked to sort of have a few moments to talk. I don't know if you wanna wait till after. Uh, we go through uh, what's been updated from the development team, or you want us to open with your sort of uh, perspective?
I, I, I'd like to open if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, uh, the floor is yours. I'm going to go off camera for two seconds while you, while you talk, but I will be listening.
Okay, and, and Zach and I did not arrange this. But it is convenient for him. Um, I think we've been talking a lot about a, a lot of the detail on forty-one North Main. And those are sort of the trees, and I think we need to step back and look a little bit at the forest here. I, I, I've been in the real estate development business for over forty-four years and in town for almost forty. And it seems that this project has had various challenged proposals for about twenty. That I can recall, and a lot of those proposals were before this developer and before this development team. Proposed by other people who were good people, supported by um, a good uh, a good uh, legal and, and other supports. Um, and, you know, I, I want everybody to remember that at one point. There was water going to come down Main Street. That was the proposal for this site. And I'd like to suggest that those smart people who were prior developers would not have done, would not have proposed that. If there was lots of good water up on the hill, but off Hunting Lane. And there was another proposal to have the septic all go under Main Street and be under the town baseball fields. Um, and likewise, that did not proceed, but likewise, if there was a great septic field right next to the restaurant's well. Um, that would not have been proposed. Um, and when this project, an earlier version of this project came before this board. In twenty twenty-one, we turned it down based on traffic. Um, and, and water availability, that project had a very expensive but also very effective uh, wastewater treatment plant up on the hill. And Hack, I think wisely, reminded, remanded to us and said, okay, well, give them a chance to come back to you on traffic. Septic and, and, and water. And so, so now it's back, and we've had no progress at all on water. And the fact that in four years, the developer has not taken any opportunities, so for pretty wet years. Taken any opportunity to do any water testing, at least to me, strongly implies that he knows what the neighbors suspect, which is. There isn't enough water to support this project or even a remotely comparable project on that hill. Um, and so I'm very deeply disappointed that the development team has done nothing on, on the water side. On traffic access, they, I think they did something very remarkable, which is finally admit that. Any material project here has to have an access directly out onto uh, North Main Street. Right at that intersection and, and that the intersection needs to be rebuilt. And I think they were also pretty candid that the price tag for that is around three quarters of a million dollars. Um, they have been less forthcoming about where that money is coming from. Now, if you eliminate the wastewater treatment plant up on the hill. That gets you about six hundred thousand dollars, but not enough for the intersection. And eliminating the wastewater treatment plant on, on the hill. Leads to the biggest new fatal flaw for this project, which is a septic system on top of a public water supply for a restaurant. Um, and we've heard various explanations that, well, the well was discontinued. Or the state maps were wrong. Or, well, yeah, it's, it's in, it's in the, it's in the riverbed area, but, but if you look at the water, it actually goes a different direction. I personally, I find those arguments unbelievable, and I do not believe them. I, I think there is a, a very serious problem there. So. Those three problems add up to one giant risk, which is if we grant a conditional approval for this project. We all know that the permit will get flipped to some naive out-of-state developer who will. And in six months, that developer will, will be right back in front of us, claiming with the usual developer puppy dog eyes. That they had no idea that there was no water, that they, they had no idea that the town was not going to rebuild the intersection for free. And that they had no idea that there was any problem with building a septic system on top of the well for the restaurant. And so I think it is, we, whether we grant this conditionally or deny it outright. I think we owe it to the town and any successor owner of the property to be extremely clear on the development challenges here. Otherwise, someone will claim they did not know, and we all know. So that's, that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that perspective. Um, and I will say, um, before I'm going to say something that the development team will not like. I wanna thank the development team for their efforts in providing the additional information. However, I will say that to Rick's point. Uh, at this juncture, um, I feel like this project remains fatally flawed. For the reasons that Rick uh, described, which is that you are trying to put a massive septic system next to a. Another septic system in a public water supp- supply buffer zone. Uh, there has been no meaningful uh, work with respect to the wells. I think that. You know, in, in, instead of. I would say continuing to. Taint the entire flavor of the recent proposal with the fatal flaws that remain. Uh, and this is a rhetorical question is, is, you know, and I'm gonna let the development team speak, but I, I, I think that. The most gracious thing to do for our time, as I am on a work trip and did not anticipate this happening tonight, um, you know. We're volunteers, um, there are fatal flaws. There are fatal flaws that cannot be conditioned and cannot be corrected as currently proposed. And so I, I would suggest that we think, and, you know, again, you, the development, you know, can respond, I would hope substantively first, but then to this point. Do we, do you withdraw the application uh, and come back when you fix those flaws, or do you leave us to essentially? Stop wasting our time and, and, and close the public hearing in the near future and, and deny this and remand it back to Hack? Because I'm telling you right now, there's no way that the septic system you have proposed is gonna go in where you propose it. That is a first order of business, and there is no water at the moment. So I, I don't know why we're still here, and, and I'm gonna stop talking now because I think I'm gonna say too much on a public hearing. Um, but I, I'm gonna sort of go to my board to see just where your sentiments are with John and Todd, and then I'm gonna go to the development team. Because I do know you spent some money and I know you put in some effort, but I do think we have remaining fatal flaws. So. John and Todd, I wanna get your quick perspectives before we go to the development team here. You're on mute, John.
I concur with everything that you and Rick just said. Uh, I am very skeptical about whether there is. Uh, adequate water for this site, and there has been no effort made to demonstrate that there is inadequate water supply. Water is a major issue, and we said that as soon as this came back to us. And there hasn't been any effort to show us that, that it's been fixed. And the, the septic is, as you say, Zach, uh. Extremely concerning, and I would not approve the, the septic as approached, as proposed. The second large septic system. Adjacent to a public water supply. It's just not safe. So I. I, I, I can, I concur with what you all have said, and I uh, agree that nobody's time should be wasted.
Yeah, or money at that matter. Uh, Todd.
Uh, I, I don't have anything substantive to, to add to the discussion, but I would just say that I, I agree with my. Uh, esteemed uh, board colleagues and, and with your comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, sorry to put a negative tone on this, but Lynn, I'm gonna defer to you and Paul now to talk about sort of the updates. And then decide, you know, we can talk about what you've provided to us uh, of late. Um, I do see Paul as a matter of. Hygiene in the public record, maybe this is um, our fault uh, for not posting it, but I see the last letter of extension for the public hearing. Looked like it was only to the end of January. I don't see anything else in our record for this particular matter, so I just wanted to.
It, it's posted, it's just uh, out of, it's posted a little bit out of order. It's hard to find, but it's posted.
I apologize.
He gave it to us.
Crappy wifi on the airplane this morning was not uh, helpful to me, so.
Thank you, Lynn Sweet L D S Consulting Group. I, we're, we're really feeling the love. We love the, the warm welcome this evening. Um, so I'm just gonna get right down to it, since it sounds like that's what the board wants to do as well. I'm joined this evening by um, Brian Giovinini of the Geo Group. Um, Mike Fabiano from High Point Engineering, Attorney Paul Haverty, who you know well of Ha- Haverty, Blatman, Bobrowski. And Silverstein and um, our client, uh, Gary Lebarsky. Um, we came into this process a number of months ago. Uh, with a sincere effort of reducing the project considerably from what the board originally saw. Um, we have worked diligently through, throughout this process. To bring additional information to the board. Certainly, it is your opinion as to whether or not that information. Is enough to satisfy your concerns. However, we have submitted and we apologize, we had some illness with some of our team members. Um, of the lateness in our submissions, but we have, we are gonna have Brian Giovinini talk about his memo. Um, this is his area of expertise with regard to wells. This is what he does every single day. Um, we did go ahead and do the soil testing. For the septic and for the stormwater as we had promised and were required to do. We understand that there, there are no concerns there, that paperwork has been turned in. Um, we also have responded to the latest comment on um, the stormwater management. And again, we don't see any if, issues there that we can't overcome down the road. Um, previously, we had uh, responded on, on the traffic. And um, we have said all along and maintain, and, and we know that this is gonna be debated. Um, in the court system, that the developer has done what they need to do at this particular point in time on the well. Again, I, I, we're not gonna go into it, so I'm gonna turn the discussion over to Brian to go through his letter. For the record, and then um, whether or not Mike wants to talk about stormwater or not. And then, you know, we're certainly happy to have you, you know, close the hearing after that. Thank you.
My name is Brian Giovinoni with the Geo Group out of Middleborough, Massachusetts. Um, you received a letter, uh, my little memo. And I was brought in to look at and to take a peek at uh, what's going on at the, between the properties at thirty-three and forty-one North Main Street in, in town. And lots of different things that I looked at. I looked at where water comes from, where it's gonna um, derive its origin from. And different ways I was looking at it. I've looked at it. I've been doing this for almost thirty-five years. This coming June will be my thirty-fifth year. Um, I got a degree from Northeastern. I'm a professional engineer. Uh, so I've been doing this, I, my, my zones two, which are the delineation of uh, where water for wells come from. Are featured on Mass G I S uh, to various communities throughout uh, Southeastern Mass. So I, I've been doing this for a long time, and I was really looking at, let's look at it from a simplest standpoint. Where is the water coming from for a, a three and a half gallon per minute well? That is uh, been bored in the bedrock. That's, that's what I was um, looking at to, to start with. So I went through and I reviewed all the documents that, that were readily available to me, including where the well was located. Where the septic system for thirty-three is located, where the septic system is proposed at forty-one. And the things that I noted were the well at thirty-three itself, um, that was put in in nineteen eighty-five. Approved thereafter by D E Huey at the time, D E P now. Um, they, they turned around and uh, gave approval for it. Um, and even stated the uh, make sure you maintain that hundred-foot radius. That was the first thing, that was back in nineteen eighty-six. Uh, today, there is an interim wellhead protection area, that's, that's um, a standard. If there is no zone two that's defined for a well, automatically, depending upon the type of well it is, it starts at four hundred, goes to five hundred. Um, but it's, it's a, it's a formula, usually it's four hundred, get four hundred feet to uh, plus thirty. Pretty much thirty feet times the, the, the flow rate, which would be another hundred, which matches up with the five hundred that is currently on there. But that's because it's a non, um, it's a community, I'm sorry, non-community transient uh, public water supply. When I looked at it and saw where the water, you know, where's the water coming from, the water's coming from deeper. Um, that's why they drilled two hundred and seventy-two feet into bedrock. This isn't a shallow aquifer well, this isn't sipping water off the, the top of the rock. As uh, when you, when you look at the soil profile, you have this profile of uh, all the land above the rock, where the well is down below. Inside goes down into that rock, and that's where it's getting its water, it's deriving it down below.
Can I just ask a quick question for clarification, by understanding while you're talking about this well, uh, we're talking about the well for Rustic, right? Uh, not Rustic, excuse me, Fireside, uh, the restaurant next door. And um, the well is about two hundred and seventy-five feet deep, is that roughly what I recall from my quick scan?
Oh, two, two hundred and seventy-two feet.
And that was not, and um, just, just so, again, I'm clear. That was drilled, uh, there was, was there fracking to get that thirteen and a half gallons per minute, or that was, that was a, a natural sort of thirteen and a half gallons a minute at that depth?
Uh, they, they turned around and they, they drilled down to the depth and they, they tried to locate water. Is, when, when they, when they drill a well in bedrock.
I know, I'm very familiar with how the process works, as well as when it goes, as well as when it doesn't produce water, so that's why I'm just clarifying. That they, I, I'm asking whether or not it was fracked to get that level of flow, or that was a natural flow, because that's obviously. You know, if you're drilling only two hundred and seventy-five feet, again, thirteen hot, thirteen and a half gallons a minute, that's not, that, that's pretty good. Uh, in my experience and my, my, my layperson's knowledge and my own experience, so I just wanna clarify that. There was not extra work done to get that thirteen and a half. I just, I just wanna clarify for the laypeople where, where we're at here.
And, and exactly, and thank you for that, that uh, clarity. I, I sometimes forget with. When I explain this stuff, that not everyone is been doing this as long as I have. I apologize.
No, no, don't apologize. Uh, you know, as a general counsel of a technical company, I, my job is to bring it up a level every day. So you're doing your job and I'm doing mine, so.
Thank you, thank you. So, so the, the, the water is coming from deep down and below. Um, that, that, the uh, the well was cased forty feet, um, sealed, um, was grouted. So you, you've got a situation where you have the shallow aquifer sitting on top. You got this, this about twenty feet, that's all there is, is only twenty feet of soil before you get to the bedrock. And then you have this well that goes down, it uh, goes down two hundred and seventy-two feet to get to that water. That water then arises up in the col- the column that it, that the hole that was drilled, that eight-inch hole that was drilled up into that column, and they pump out of that column. Now, what we have here is you have a septic system, four thirty-three, the current, the house, the, I'm sorry, the, the restaurant. And, and in that, that property there, their septic system, which is a hundred and seventy feet off of their own well. Then you have the well, the uh, the septic system that is being proposed at forty-one, which is even beyond that, about two hundred fifty, two hundred sixty feet. Um, there, from the well itself at thirty-three. So you've got a couple of things going on where the water that goes into this aquifer, where does it flow to? It flows east to west from Main Street. That's based on the, the, the gradients that we've seen, the water table, um, uh, deep hole tests that were conducted. So we kinda know that it's, it's. So we kind of know that it's, it's grady, and the gradient is going off towards the railroad tracks from Main Street to the, the railroad tracks. So anything that comes in there, gravity pulls it in that direction. And that's why we took, keep talking about the waters flowing east to west. That's just gravity pulling it in that direction. And then I believe on the other side of the tracks, there's a, there's a wet area. It's just ma- naturally making its way over there. And then it flows north, I think, at that point. Um, so that's kind of how I was looking at where the, where this, where is the septic going to go? When, 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 uh, the septic at forty-one, where does a septic at thirty-three go? Uh, when you're putting the septic into the, into the water table, the first thing you do is you do raise, locally you will raise the water table. It's not a lot, but it will raise it up. So what ends up happening is, is you have these two competing septic systems that are pushing water. To, towards each other, and then it's going to go with gravity east to west, um, towards the railroad tracks. So that's where we were looking at. The water is, the water from forty-one, you know, where is it going to go? The septic water, where is it going to go? That's, that's where I was looking at this, uh, this, this project. And I, I mean, I was going through it at depth, trying to find every little piece that we had. Uh, available to us, you know, and, and I, I thank the town because the town had septic plans and et cetera for thirty-three that was readily available to us. And I appreciate that because half of the time you, you don't have that information and you, and you're trying to, and you have to do, you have to do whole deep hole tests all over the place trying to find more information. So. We had that information and that's where we came up with this, uh, when I was looking at this, where the water's going. It's going east to west. It's not going into a well heading south because gravity's pulling it to the west. Um, you also have another septic system, their own septic system that is located on their property that. Their, their septic would be in their own well if that was a problem. Their septic would be in their own well if that was, if that was the big, the big problem. So with this water going east to west. That's where, uh, that's where we looked at this. And that's why I, when I looked at that, um. I, I, I kept going back to. What other way could we look at this? Um, there, unless you just, you defined a zone two, which there is a zone two defined for this. Um, you ha- you have to really kind of go back to the, where does the water go? And when we define zone two, that's exactly what we do. We, we look at, we look at where the, the water is actually flowing from and getting to that well and how it gets there. Um, we used to call a thing called, I'm a little raindrop and you go, where does the raindrop go? And wherever it flows, and that's how we do these analyses. Uh, it's computerized, but it's also com- we use common sense. It doesn't make sense that it's going in that direction. So that's how we came up with these, um, this, this little memo that we've come up with here, with our summary.
Brian, can I just ask you a quick question here? When you say that it's flowing from, uh, east to west and then north, we're talking about it flowing into a wetland and then into a stream, correct?
I, I believe at some point it gets, goes across the tracks and, um, like any, like water anywhere, it's gonna, it's gonna finally daylight at some location. I don't know where, where it locate, but it, it goes across towards the tracks.
Yeah, there's a brook that crosses right by, right by those tracks, uh, about twenty feet from it. I walked out on a regular basis. Um. And I just want to confirm, and, and I'm going to ask my board, sorry, just, just to my own understanding, and I'm going to ask Rick, actually, I'm going to ask Rick because he has his hand raised, uh, because he wants to answer my question. Um, is this a nitrogen sensitive area, Rick, in your perspective because of the wetland or not really?
I, I, I think it's nitrogen sensitive only because of the, uh, the public water supply, but that's not really my area of expertise. What, what, what concerns me about what Mr. Giovanni was telling us is. Um, he's mixing apples and oranges, which is the, uh, the restaurant has a restaurant operation and I think three bedrooms. And the proposed new system has fifty-six bedrooms. And I think that difference is material.
Yeah, I think it's very material. Um. I mean, I, so, so sorry, uh, Brian, please, Mr. Gi- Giovanni.
It's Giovinoni. It was Americanized in the early nineteen hundreds.
Screens. I, I probably need to adjust my prescription. I cannot read everything right now.
It's, 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 it's okay. You guys are closer than most people, which is awesome. Um, so looking, looking at it, you have a septic system for thirty-three that is, is at, uh, five thousand two hundred and twenty-five gallons a day. The septic system at forty-one, and I don't have that number directly in front of me. I, I'd almost go back to Mike if you, Mi- Mike Fabiano, if you have that number.
Ninety, ninety-five hundred?
Ninety-five, ninety-five hundred. Yes. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a about forty percent larger.
And all human waste septic flow. As opposed to the restaurant is going to be a lot of restaurant food waste. Which is different and maybe easier or maybe harder, but in term, in terms of nitrates and things like that, I don't think the flows are the same. Gallon to gallon.
Well, one of the interesting things about, uh, restaurant waste is it's very high BOD. And what happens with very high BOD septage is it's.
Can you use, can you, uh, explain the acronym for?
Biological oxygen demand. That's the, it's what it is, is the, the type of waste that it is, it requires a lot of oxygen, um, to be processed. And one of the issues is, is what you have for nitrogen in there does not process well with, with, with a high BOD. Um, when we, I looked at, I looked at the possibility of creating a denitrification septic system. On thirty-three and, and, and convert it. They, they allow it down the cape for just two, three years, but there's nothing as a permanent solution. And the biggest problem they have with it, it's, there's a pro- pro- program called Sludge Dog is one of the, one of the acronyms they, they have down there. And the problem with it is that it's only good for, for household because when you have the high BOD, it absolutely, the nitrogen processing does not work. So what happens is, is the higher BOD, the nitrogen that's in it. Doesn't get processed out like it would naturally, as, as, as the, as, as it naturally goes through.
So.
The breakdown process.
So to recap, so to recap, just simply, so there's an existing condition that this board has no control over at this point. With respect to the infrastructure that is loading. The ground in that immediate area with nitrogen is, is what I'm hearing. And does that, did I play that back right?
Pretty much.
Okay. So there's a condition that we can't control that's exacerbating the problem that y'all have to face. And deal with.
Okay.
Right? Which is the nitrogen loading, right? This is the, this is the issue. So.
Well, the, the loading, but where, where does the nitrogen go? The nitrogen's, the nitrogen's in the, in the water, the septage water. And where does the septage water go?
Right. And I think, and I think, right. So, so, and, and just, I don't know where you are in terms of your familiarity, but my understanding is they want to put wells. Uh, on the other side of those tracks that drew down the wetlands. So, um, that to me seems like a problem. But I'll, that's, that's my ad lib. So.
I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of that. Um, I, I will. It's not something that I was looking into. I was looking more at the septic and where septic was flowing. And, and the well itself, um, to, to, uh, to make sure that. Where things are going. So, uh, I'm, am not aware of location of well. I know there wasn't a well on the site at forty-one. Uh, because I was looking to see if there was any type of a well on that, that location to see if that would be affected. Um, because if it was closer to a different area, I would, I was looking at all conditions on that. And then I was looking for anything else that I could find if there was a septic. Anywhere else in the vicinity, but that's the, the key one that, that I was looking at was thirty-three.
I, I appreciate the perspective and, and the infor- information. And just to, again, recap and tell me if I'm missing something, uh, anyone who can correct me, which I'm sure there will be someone who can. Uh, that the well, I think that, um, the applicant team has actually. Uh, asked for an extension of a notice of intent to continue testing of the well. Uh, head that was put, uh, in, in the wetlands across. The, uh, railroad tracks. And so that is, that is, continues to be the plan. There is no new proposal for a well location. Um, and I think that this, what you're describing is that the affluent and the nitrogen's flowing in that direction in a nitrogen sensitive area. Uh, am I missing something, uh, development team or board members? Correct me if I'm mischaracterizing where I think we are. I see a, a head nodding from Rick. No. So I'm, I'm gonna assume that that means I'm not wrong, at least grossly wrong. Um. I don't see anything from Paul or Lynn, um, and, and Mr. Labar.
So you're asking, have we, are we changing the location of the wells? And the answer to that is no.
Okay.
Is that, is, was there, it seemed like there were three or four questions in there. So what are the rest of them?
Yeah. So we can unpack it. So it's, it's sort of, it's, it's, it's not that hard though, right? I mean, we're talking about water flowing through septic systems. Existing and proposed in an easterly, uh, westerly direction. Um, which is a going to be, if not it already is a nitrogen sensitive zone because there's an existing well buffer and then you want to put an additional well in the wetlands across the tracks in the direction of the septic flow. Rick.
Well, we're also brushing over a, a, another key item, which is. The reason everybody does these bedrock wells is to get water out of the cracks in the bedrock that have been there for the last three hundred and fifty million years. And as we've discussed on this project and others. Nobody has a map of where those cracks go. Um, but if you build your septic system right over a crack and it leads directly to someone's well, that's a bad fact. Um, so the water does not just stay in that upper level. Um, you know, it goes down too. Um, I agree that the, the, the lateral flow east-west will probably predominate, but it's not like it's sitting there on a tarp.
Right.
Mr. Chair. Uh, one of, one of the things that's noted is if you look at, if you look at the DE QE approval of the well, you do have four inches of till, a four feet of till sitting on top of the bedrock. Till is, it, it, between the bedrock and the till, that's what, that's what really gives you a, a really confined aquifer, which keeps things separated. Now you may have a leaky confined aquifer. I understand what you're thinking. It might be a leaky confined where you might have some, um, something coming through. But what happens is the predominant flow is the predominant flow across, um, the, the site. Um, but, uh, I understand, you're right. Bedrock wells, there's, there's been theories that bedrock wells can come from thirty miles away, the water. Yeah, it, you know, and, and you don't, you, you, you're right. The, the exact science on it is. Um, cracked by, I think, I can be humorous for a second. It's, it's cracked a little bit. Um, but, uh. But, you know, we, what we look at is, is where does, where do we, our best ability to define where water is coming from and where it's, where it's going to go.
Um, thank you, uh, Brian. And I'm not going to try to mess up your last name again. So, um. Is there anyone else in the, uh, applicant team? Uh, actually, let me start with this. Uh, board members, any questions for Brian?
No.
Okay. Uh, applicant team, do you have any, um, other, um, information you'd like to share or, um, discussion? Um, I'd like to sort of, sort of assess where we are, um. Sort of given, you know, the statement's already made. So.
Can we ask for, and Mike Fabiano, I just want him to give a couple of updates on the civil end, please?
Sure. Thanks, Lynn. Mike Fabiano with High Point Engineering, uh, the Record Civil Engineers for the project. So the update I'd like to provide on two fronts. Uh, we did perform septic system testing, uh, that was completed last week and it was witnessed by the Board of Health. Uh, we have submitted the appropriate form work as of this morning, which was Form eleven and Form twelve and a map. Um, so a, a package has been submitted. It's not a design package. It's basically an accounting of what happened in the field. Uh, that was witnessed, um, you know, per CMR rule that we need to, uh, submit that paperwork within sixty days of testing and that piece is completed. Um, the second piece is specifically regarding stormwater. Um, so the. Uh, we have a second go around for a response to comments. I think I'll simply say that, uh, we are, we have. Substantially accepted all comments. That they would be completed in the fashion prior to final plans being completed. So we tried to provide enough detail. Through the remaining items and, and the, the new items that were related specific to, um, the MS four comments. Uh, we are accepting all federally regulated mandates that the town is required to do based on a federal requirement. Uh, and then I believe that the, uh, the MS four related comment as it relates to waivers, specifically with. Uh, chapter twenty-five and the comprehensive stormwater regulations. Um, so there's comments in there that said the, uh, the chapter twenty-five waiver request, uh, is still in place. However, when it comes to federally regulated or mandated, um, sections that we would be, uh, we're accepting those, those provisions. In place. The only comment I believe that remains outstanding, there was one comment by Tetra Tech, the purring viewing engineer. Where one of the underground systems, um, was, uh, commented that they wanted to add an isolator row. And we disrespectfully disagreed with that was a necessary add-on, you know, for that particular system. So, uh, in general, we accepted, however, there's a, a comment, you know, it basically says prior to final plans being completed. And then there's a detail providing what we'd be doing, um, to accept that comment.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. And, uh. High level, can you just tell me, I know they're unofficial results, uh, we're not going to hold you to it and I'm not, um, you know, necessarily. Trying to create any kerfuffle between you and the Board of Health, but if you could just tell us, you know, in your professional. Opinion, which we all know is not necessarily certain, what your experience was during the testing this past week.
I think the testing, uh, more or less confirmed what we were expecting based on prior records. Um, till groundwater, you know, there was. There was some discussion in the field about where to put the modeling, you know, for where high grounder was, but it was, it was moving around in a very short band. You know, uh, within the property, I think one of the, one of the four test pits, uh, produced, uh, longer than expected. Uh, results, but overall it didn't substantially change the intent of a future system, excuse me. Coffin gagging. I'm getting over.
Going on mute.
Got stuck in my, uh, my throat. Sorry about that. Uh, so the, uh, so the, the system, um. You know, there, there will be similar to the thirty-three North Main Street. There's an expect, expectation that there's going to be a mounded. System as far as grade goes, uh, there's definitely, um, you know, some modifications that will happen in, in final design, but overall we didn't see any. Uh, any indication that there is enough substantial. Risk from the, of the test pits that would say that the project was not going to work. Uh, change, yes, but as far as.
Uh, depth to groundwater, are you thinking you're within, you need a waiver from local regs or would you, uh, need to raise it?
Uh, I don't know that I can answer that.
You probably can't yet.
From, yeah.
I just didn't know if it was that obvious. Uh, you know, I, you know, if it's on a line, obviously it's a model it, but.
Yeah, I think, um. You know, I, I think the elevation in that area is going to go up, you know, as far as a final grade goes in order to create separation. And whatnot compared to where things are at. I mean, it is till, we had a decent sized machine. There is. A lot of digging going on that day and, uh, you know, there's frost on top of it to, uh, to get through. So it wasn't. The best of conditions and winter conditions to, uh, you know, to do, uh, the type of testing, but I think it was. I think it was successful from a, um, you know, get it done and before this board meeting.
And, and appreciate the efforts there. Uh, I see some board members, uh, Board of Health members' hands are raised. So before I go to that, I just want to make sure that the, the development team is sort of. Uh, closed out their perspective on this issue before I, uh, go to the Board of Health, uh, members whose hands are raised. Mike, anything? Lynn, anything?
No.
Okay. Uh, Daryl.
Okay. I'd just like to ask Mark Orem if he could, uh. Summarize very quickly the. Observations in the field. Uh, I don't believe that. Uh, our local regulations for depth to groundwater will be met.
And I'd be glad to, uh, speak on that. Um, my name's Mark Orem. I'm the Sherbin Board of Health Agent and I would like to note that. We were out there last week and we found modeling anywhere from, uh, forty-one inches, um, sixty, thirty-five inches. So anything, uh, in the range of thirty-five, the forty-one inches and forty-four, they will not meet. The local Board of Health codes. Those groundwaters were found within the first five feet of material. From the top of ground and will not meet the requirements at the local level. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate that perspective. Uh, Andrea, do you still have your hand raised? I can't quite see where my screen is right now.
I do. I was going to turn on my, um.
Um. I see you now.
Um, well. Uh, I, uh, okay. So, all right. Um. Some of you don't know me. I'm, I'm an LSP. Um, I have to quite frequently evoke my groundwater hydrology. Background, um, for contaminated groundwater plumes, um, which is not dissimilar to a septic system situation. Um, and I also, I'm, I'm very concerned about the project and the management of the septic waste. And I have. And I have several issues. I won't get to them all, I promise. But one is that if the groundwater flow direction was evaluated by looking at the, the groundwater elevations of the wells from the nineteen eighty-five study for the thirty-three North Main. Those wells are all in one straight line. You can't, groundwater is three dimensional. You can't determine groundwater flow with wells that are in a straight line. So you knew, at the very least, you need three triangulated wells. But, so, you know, so there's that. Also, all right, well, let's assume for a moment, well, also, there's a hill, bedrock controlled hill immediately to the north, which would suggest that groundwater could flow southerly and toward thirty-three. So it, so, so we really don't have a good groundwater flow direction assessment. But let's assume for a minute that it does flow westerly. Once you start pumping that huge volume of septic into the septic system, you will get a mounting effect and the waste from there will flow radially away and will, you know, and there will be a component that flows southerly toward the abutters, the thirty-three abutters to the south. And also, you know, as much as we'd like to think that groundwater follows that the, you know, that, that all the contaminants will follow the groundwater the way it flows, that's unfortunately not the case, much to our chagrin. When we're working on cleanup sites, we often find due to dispersion and diffusion and, you know, other chemical reasons that the groundwater, that the contaminants will actually migrate uphill, up gradient. So so this is, you know, this is not a, a controlled, this is not a situation, when I, I mean, when I, when I look at the, when I look at the, the map that was shown, I'm like, I'm getting flashbacks of a president with a Sharpie telling us where the storm is gonna go, you know, against the, the reports of the weather people. Anyway, I, 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 I'm not, I'm not feeling it.
All right, thanks, thank you, Andrea. Just one, just one more moment and I think we're gonna, we're gonna close this issue out.
Okay, I know, I'm, I, I, I was gonna make the point that, that Rick made. That, that when, you know, if it does flow to fractures, it very well could impact wells and I don't know, I guess that, I guess I'm done.
Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate the perspective and Mark and Daryl as always for joining. I, I know this is extracurricular if you're already volunteer activity, so appreciate it. So I think, you know, one concern I have is it's the fact that the, the stuff is gonna be mounted. It looks like it's under the driveway entrance. That seems to be a practical problem potentially, but that's just another issue that I see. So I guess, you know, I, I think there seems to be a, you know, a bunch of open holes. I don't wanna put the development team in a, you know, prejudicial situation where you can't come back or you have to waste more money going to hack. But at the same time, I think that there's a lot of open issues here. And so I, I just don't know that, you know, we are addressing them at the speed that the board would like to see and at the completeness that the board would like to see. And so I would like to sort of, sort of hear my, hear from my board sort of where they are on this issue because I, I think there's a lot of ground to cover before we can even get to an approval. And I think we've made that clear. So I just wanna see what the board has to say in terms of what they would think they would like me to do or what we should vote on or how we should proceed because I, I just think there's a lot of ground to cover here. Board members, any comments, perspectives?
Well, I, I think that we should close the hearing. And take a vote tonight.
To close the hearing.
Yep.
And Mr. Novak.
I, I, I'd support a motion to close the hearing. I, I think the reason in deal work, we always use the term fatal flaws is because it's the right term. You can have fifty great things about a proposed purchase and if there's a fatal flaw, it doesn't happen because it's fatal. And I think this project has at least two fatal flaws and possi, and, and a third very serious one. And, and while I appreciate that they're close on certain aspects of septic and, and close on certain aspects of civil engineering, with no water and the septic in the interim, had interim well protection area for a restaurant and, and, and no demonstration that they have the money to rebuild this necessary intersection, why are we here?
Yeah, I just think that there's, like I said, a lot of ground to cover.
Yeah, I, I don't see a continuation of the public hearing bearing any fruit beyond what we've already seen and discussed.
Given the current plan, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
What's been proposed?
Yes, but based on all the information that we, we have to contemplate at this point.
You know, I think what stands out is obvious to me. I'm a lawyer, I'm not a developer. You know, I don't, I don't know everything, but what, 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 what presents to me is that the density and the scale of this project presents really the biggest issues with both, you know, water supply, nitrogen issues, where you can locate all the infrastructure. You know, it seems to be a, a drastically reduced density project would move this in the direction to something that is plausibly approvable. That is what another development team has heard time and time again, and that's what they have responded with and, and, and they are, you know, moving in a direction towards an approval. So I, I, I would say that, that's my perspective. I, I wanna hear others' perspectives on this before we vote on anything. Rick?
Well, you raise an interesting point, which is, I'll rephrase your question to me as so. Is there a scale at which this project could be approved? And without well testing up on that hill, my answer would be no. Cause we don't even.
We don't know, yeah, we, we don't know.
We don't even know that, that, that the, the wells up there can support two more houses, two.
Right, but we do know that, you know, I'm just making up numbers.
Yeah.
Fourteen or sixteen beds is a dramatic reduction of need than
Right.
sixty beds, right? A lot less water, a lot less nitrates.
Right.
A lot less infrastructure. So it's just a scale issue because you're, you're trying to jam in a lot of units in the absence of any real information of both of those critical pieces and the challenges become exponentially more difficult.
I, 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 I agree with you that certainly the smaller the project gets, the exponentially lower the problems get because it's the reverse of, if you make the project twice the size, it's, it's fifteen times the impacts.
I'm just dealing with, I'm just dealing with our Title V regs and our, I'm just dealing with, I'm just applying it to the rubric of not even just theoretical, right? Just what we have to deal with in terms of what parameters we can make a decision from.
Right. But I don't think we can tell them make the project ten units. I don't think we have the legal right to do it and if we did, I think we, I think we'd be bounced and I'm not sure that would work.
I, I think we, we can't tell them how to, we, no, we cannot tell them how to redevelop it, but, or redesign it. But I think that that's an obvious, it's, it's, it's a stating of the obvious.
I agree with you, sir.
Board members, any other comments? Jonathan, I know you, you've sort of, you've both taught it, but I see Marion's hands raised. So after you.
And maybe it's not.
I don't know who's speaking.
You know, maybe I shouldn't be, but that we're sort of embarking on the most expensive and risky proposition by moving forward with EIA's as sort of close to ninety percent of our.
Whoever's speaking, could you identify yourself, please?
Scott on the iPhone, please mute yourself. You are not being recognized by the chair. Thank you.
There we go.
Yes.
I think, I think it was Scott.
Oh. Hi, Scott. Wait, not, Scott, if you're trying to speak, you're on mute now and, and now we cannot hear you.
But, but I think Zach was asking the board members to speak up, not, not.
That's right. I wanna, the board, I was asking the board to speak and then I saw Marion's hand was raised and I, if Scott, if you, I see your, if, okay, Scott's after Marion, so. Board members and Marion and Scott. Todd?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it, it seems to me that we've begun to enter conversations that feel like deliberation.
Yeah. I just, look, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be fair to the development team, to the applicants purse, to our time, you know, I, I, to, to Rick's point, I see fatal flaws. I'm trying to figure out what the best and fairest approach is moving forward. So with that, I'm gonna go to Marion and then Scott.
Thank you, Marion Neutro, twenty-five Prospect Street. Speaking for myself, not for any board. It seems to me that you've definitely done your duty to be responsive to the developer up to now, big time. And it seems to me that talking about redesigning the project at this point is, again, a waste of time. There's been plenty of time, if they wanted to redesign the project to fit whatever water turns out to be there or not be there, they've had years to do that. And I hate to see you spend more of your valuable time hashing over details of this project. I think the initial, I, I, I urge you to follow your initial instincts at the beginning of this meeting. There are fatal flaws of the project as presented. It's not a time to redesign the project for the developer and I would stick to your guns, basically.
Thank you, Marion. I appreciate your perspective. Scott, you're not on mute, it looks like, and you were ready to speak, so please, you have the floor. Yes.
I'm sorry, I tried to unmute before, but I don't think I was able to unmute anyways. I, I guess I just have a couple of deep problems that I've submitted or provided information to pass on this and change and that's really two points here. One is pretty clear to me that this site is within a quote nitrogen sensitive area. In fact, I would suggest probably at least two nitrogen sensitive areas. So public waters, small wells, there are interim, interim well protection areas, which has the naming five interim. The likely actual zone two areas are larger, include the site. So in that respect, we're in a sensitive area. And then secondly, it's also pretty clear that this section of town, in fact, most of the town, is on private septic, private well, is also qualified as a like a sensitive area. So this site is a challenging site and in my opinion should address both impacts on public wells as well as private wells in the area. And then I, I, I don't know where the project's standing in terms of max, of its own water supply, but I had testified earlier about some comments and concerns about that as well in terms of impacts and drought on the wetland. I don't know if anything has been done. I made some recommendations for the testing of the park and the wetland. But I think those are the two impacts that I see that frankly, to my knowledge, has not been resolved. The water quality impacts associated with the septic and then the hydrologic impacts on the water supply. And I'll stop there.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate the perspective. All right, I'm gonna look to the board for next steps here. I think there was a proposal for a motion to close. Oh, there's another hand raised.
You have another hand raised, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Michael?
Michael, less than fifty-four Forest Street and a Conservation Commission member. I just wanna bring up in the list of issues that are still outstanding that I might not be reading it correctly in the, in the, in this hurried moments, but it seems like there's still a number of stormwaters issues that have just been put off in terms of when they would provide or somehow that they will deal with the stormwater issues in some final plan. And it's not clear whether those will also be issues that might be a little bit more problematic than expected at the moment in terms of meeting the stormwater standards. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Appreciate it. Board members?
Zach, first of all, I believe we should not be speculating on how this plan could be changed in the future to make it possibly more acceptable. We have no idea if, if any such plan exists and I, I would not favor encouraging the applicant to take any steps in response to those comments. This is a fatally flawed plan. I think we should close the hearing and in your discretion, Zach, take a vote on the application.
I think we're gonna close the public hearing tonight. I think that's, I think that seems to be where the direction the board wants to go. I, I agree with Jonathan. I also appreciate the guidance that we shouldn't be speculating on how to make the project work. That's just my pathological need to try to make everyone happy, which is not necessarily what's the best for the town here, or legal, from a legal perspective. So I think I'll entertain a vote to close the public hearing, but I will not entertain a vote for the deliberation piece tonight. That's, that's sort of where I'm at. Mr. Novak?
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing for the remainder forty-one North Main Street project. I second that.
Do I have a vote? By roll, Mr. Fitch?
Fitch, aye.
Mr. Labby?
Labby, aye.
Mr. Novak?
Novak, aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Public hearing is closed on this matter. We will, we will set a time to deliberate. I don't know procedurally if we have to set that right now in the public hearing. We may have to do that. We might wanna also wait and, and schedule a deliberation time and date that is for potentially both projects. I don't know if that's, that works for this, if that works, if we can, if we have to set the deliberation meeting now. Rick, I don't know what your thoughts are.
Well, Paul, Paul will probably correct me. I don't think we have to set the deliberation date now. I think it would be courteous to the applicant and maybe good comedy if we could do so, just because I'm sure as we're doing our deliberation, people will wanna watch us and it'll be easier for them to keep track if we set a date tonight. Mr. Haverty, how did I do?
Mr. Novak, I believe that you are absolutely correct. I, I don't think that there is a requirement that you announce the date of your deliberative hearing. It's an administrative process. It just has to be done in public. It can't be done in like a closed session. But you aren't required to announce it at this stage. However, it is definitely something that would be appreciated if we were provided that information so that we can set our schedule and make sure we have the opportunity to view it.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Paul, and thank you, Rick. I think we're gonna, with, with that, we voted. The public hearing is closed. I'm gonna wait till after the next matter to set the date to which I believe will be the deliberation, the next deliberation opportunity for this matter. And we will move on to the next, the next matter on agenda tonight before we set the the date for our deliberations on this matter. So with that, I'm gonna reopen the here, public hearing on Chapter forty, the Comprehensive Termin for Brush Hill, Phoenix Partners. The address escapes me, but we all know what we're talking about. And I believe the applicant team is here. And so Bob, I see you're here with a new background. Maybe you're in a nice warm place. No. Okay. So Bob, any, any? So, uh, Bob, any uh, any updates uh, substantively besides Mr. Hill's um, letter, which I will address momentarily.
Sure, sure. Uh, the only uh, update I have is um, that the Board of Health two nights after your last meeting, uh, did meet and uh, uh, do a final review uh, and voted to approve the Title V application for the twelve bedroom septic system that that's in front of you tonight. Um, so uh, Board of Health has uh, approved the Title V system. Uh, and then um, with regard to the uh, Dan's letter, um, as you might imagine, I have much to say about that.
I did see an email come through. I have not read it. I have I just, I would prefer if you would withhold your comments, because I have my own. If you don't mind.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, no, I was just asking process wise if if and when we'll be able to comment and
You you will in a moment, but I don't want anyone to believe that you're leading me to the what I'm about to say, which is, which is uh, clear frustration with Mr. Hill uh, at at what he submitted. Because I think he knows as well as the rest of us do uh, lawyers, that a lot of what he requested is not enforceable. And we postponed this hearing for thoughtful and forcible conditions. And I don't believe that that's what was submitted to us. And I just want to make clear that I don't, I don't appreciate that. Um, I appreciate that Mr. Hill is advocating for his clients zealously, which is great, but there is an awareness of what we actually have the authority to do. And so for instance, and I would say this, the first condition I find and I take issue with because it's saving an ash tree in a traveled way when there's ash borer all over town, killing all of our ash trees and we're supposed to keep a tree that's gonna die in a traveled way. So that's just, to me, that's the tip of the iceberg of part of the problem of what we've received. And I hope that moving forward with other applications and other uh, advocacy by counsel that we are, you know, moving more towards the path of what this board can actually enforce uh, versus what is a wish list for the butters. So with that, Bob, what do you have to say about Attorney Hill's letter?
Uh, I think you've kind of said it and we didn't talk in advance. And in fact, in the email I sent to the board a half hour ago, I I used the exact wish list word. Um, so I'll I'll just leave leave your comments, because I I I got into more detail in the email uh, about what I thought, you know, we could, there was, there were things in the letter that were acceptable. Uh, and they were acceptable, frankly, because they were based on uh, federal, state and local uh, regulations. And, you know, I was accepting of those. So you'll see, I did a whole analysis and um, kind of accepted, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, but then um, there's a lot of stuff that um, frankly, is not based on any requirements on folks who are building, uh, you know, forced single, otherwise building for single family homes in Sherburne. So anyway.
I actually find, and I'm just gonna say this, I I find the preservation of an ash tree in town to be actually dangerous as one fell on my tractor. Two months ago, as I was mowing the lawn, because I'm not allowed to cut them down, and that's a different issue. But, you know, I think, I think that that there's some things that are just not 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 appropriate. And I'm just, I I can't underscore that enough that I I I have a real issue with the wish lists. You know, this is not something that I wake up in the morning to want to do and have sort through all this material. And so I I really would appreciate moving forward if we can be a little more realistic with with what we're asking for. So with that, um, I I will turn it over to Attorney Hill and to talk about the ones I I think, I'd like you to highlight the ones do you think are are grounded in local and federal and state law, not wish list items. Do you think are the most important top five? Uh, because I'd like to move forward with 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 the discussion other than than that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the record, my name is Dan Hill. I'm an attorney and represent the two Director Butters, the Lauterbacks and then the Tals. I I'm sorry you felt that that my uh, list of conditions was inappropriate. Uh, this, the the most of the conditions that are in my letter, I think there was like sixty seven conditions. Most of them are boilerplate conditions that I've used as special counsel to zoning boards around the state. A lot of those conditions uh, came directly from uh, my letter to the to this board uh, about eight years ago. Um, as Rick may recall, the Fields of Sherburne. As as an attorney who's been doing this line of work for over twenty years, uh, chapter forty B work, I I I know exactly, Mr. Chairman, what is defensible and forcible and what isn't. Um, I would not have put in this letter a condition that I thought was non-defensible. Um, I understand that people can disagree what's what's defensible and what's enforceable. Um, certainly, the Housing Appeals Committee has a different view than than I do. Um, but the Housing Committee, Housing Appeals Committee is not the final say either. With respect to the ash tree condition, um, I'm not an arborist, so you may know more than I do about ash trees, perhaps. Perhaps they're considered to be junk trees. I I don't know that. Uh, what I do know is that it's a mature tree, uh, it's a specimen tree that's on the property boundary shared with my client, Dennis and Vicki. Uh, if you came out to the site, you would have seen uh, this beautiful tree uh, in their backyard. Um, and it's important to them. It it's it's a very common condition in forty B permits around the state to preserve existing trees to the extent possible. And that that was the motivation behind that condition. Uh, simply that the driveway could be aligned uh, to be as far away from the root system of that tree as possible. I don't think it actually adds any cost to the developer. It just basically shifts the driveway a little bit to the left to avoid those roots and then can come back into the center line. Along those lines, we we actually thought it would be more appropriate to to have the driveway in the center of the fifty foot strip rather than up against uh, the Lauterbacks property, which um, is mostly where it is. I don't really understand the the rationale for that. So that was another comment on on the driveway.
Just a, just for the public's education on ash tree situations, we have a, we have a a blight of ash borer. It's a beetle, girdles the tree from the inside. Ash trees are particularly dangerous when they die because they get brittle and they break from the top down. And they 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 are particularly dangerous when they are dead and standing. And so this is where I take a particular issue with the condition because you're asking to keep a tree that's, I guarantee you will be dead in five years, no matter what you do. Uh, and you can, you can, I'll bet you twenty bucks on that. And you can, that's in the public hearing. You can call me out on that. It will be dead in five years. And it will be a hazard to that roadway. So I I I, that that is, that unfortunately, that was the first condition I read. And I had issue with the first one. So I I did read the rest on the plane this morning. I I was not, you know, construction fencing with can't uh, with canvas coverings doesn't seem to be something that we require of other other homes, uh, you know, other non-affordable developments in town. So these are just things that, you know, I I think that uh, provide fodder for, if I were to grant them, would provide fodder for the development team.
Yeah, so I think along those lines and and the theme, I think what I'm hearing is that you 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 believe that uh, conditions that are in in my list, for example, that may exceed what the planning board might impose on a on a conventional subdivision. I I guess my response to that would be this, this project is is more dense than what would be allowed conventionally under any kind of um special permitting or subdivision context. And and therefore with that greater intensity of use of the project site uh, comes with it the need to provide more protections for uh, environmental interests, but also for screening for the existing neighborhood uh, and protecting their wells and protecting their septic systems. So that was, that was really the the motivation behind a lot of the conditions that maybe more than may go beyond what Sherburne might typically require in a more conventional context. But just going back to the the, yeah, Rick, you wanted to jump in? You're on mute.
I was saying, when you're done, Dan.
Okay. Um, so just going back to the the project specific conditions, um, you know, under under number one, we're actually proposing that there be uh, four design modifications. Uh, again, the driveway being in the center line. Um, and we we also think that the the house number one can be moved moved uh, tour towards the uh, um, I don't know my directions on the plan by by heart, but more to the left. If you're facing, if you're looking at it from Brush Hill Road. And and that that the the houses be pushed back um, and and the driveway be pushed back from the property lines. I mean, I think you you know from my last comment letter that it just felt really strange to me that 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 the developer had proposed their project driveway virtually on the property line, which doesn't seem necessary and doesn't seem that neighborly. And and so we had proposed and requested that everything be 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 pushed back by twenty or thirty feet to provide some additional buffer to allow for screening. It would allow for a reasonable space to plow snow. Um, if snow is plowed on the driveway as it's currently designed, it's gonna be plowed onto my client's properties. Um, and that's just some, that's just not reasonable or fair. Uh, so we asked for that change. We also suggested that the wells be relocated so that the full hundred and fifty foot radius around those wells would remain on the project site and not overlap onto onto my client's properties, which would then essentially impose an encumbrance on on their properties, uh, which is not reasonable. So I think those are the main projects specific for um, and you know, most of the other conditions, again, are sort of boilerplate, dealing with construction hours, you know, blasting, excuse me, blasting conditions. Conditions.
Is there a local, is there a local ordinance on um, you know, when folks can work and and make certain noise? Are we? I didn't know if we had a, we had a Wellesley leaf blower ordinance in town that I'm not aware of. Uh, but uh, Rick. You're on mute.
I think there's an easy way through the thicket here, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We're we're under no obligation to adopt any of Mr. Hill's proposed conditions. That's not to say I'm against them all, just that that that's the legal fact. And we we have several other projects that we have approved with extensive and detailed and lengthy conditions. And I think Mr. Haverty and Mr. Hill have been involved in some of them, certainly the Fields of Sherburne. And it would seem to me that with, you know, we asked Hill for his proposed uh, list of conditions, he gave it to us. So we don't love them all. That's okay. Maybe we hate them all. Uh, that's that, that'll be up to us in our deliberations. But my point is, with the prior decisions written by the board for the other projects, I think there is a critical mass of fairly well-established condition, conditions we can draw upon to pick and choose. And therefore, we don't need to hash them all through tonight.
No, I guess I my one question to Mr. Hill, and and if you don't have the answer tonight, that's fine. But, you know, besides the aesthetics and the nuisance issues, is there a health and safety condition that you are top two or three that you are particular, you would like us to particularly focus on in our deliberations, which are going to commence soon?
Well, the health and safety issue is is our wells and condition number forty two in my list uh, mirrors the language that I already provided you frankly, on what we think is an appropriate level of of well testing um, prior to the project having occupancy. So twenty, uh, I'm sorry, forty two, forty three, deal with those issues. Some of the condo regulations touch on that as well to ensure that the project has adequate reserves in the in the capital account for replacement of the septic system and for dealing with issues with wells and septics. Um, that's under Section G. Um, but yeah, I mean, I think that's the the biggest public health and safety issue. And and the only other really kind of project related conditions that we included, we had to do with landscaping, because I don't think we've seen a landscaping plan, which is fine. Um, and I recognize that it's a small project, so we don't need a lot of um, attention to a landscape plan. But this is a big issue for my clients because they're basically a road is gonna be going in 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 an area that's currently woods. Um, and and there'll be a significant disruption to to what they currently experience. So we're we're asking for landscaping. Uh, we've given you what we'd like to see, but we also recognize it's it's your your, it's your decision. And and you need to make a decision that's in the best interest of the town of Sherburne.
Yeah, I mean, I I appreciate your perspective and I appreciate the, I appreciate the feelings of the butters. I do. I I I empathize with them. I looked for land that had conservation next to me for a reason. I want privacy and and, you know, um, I guess for better or worse, maybe the land next to me has already been tested and done. Maybe it's not. Um, but if it, if something were to be built, I can plant trees on my property too. And I guess that's I can't, I can't impugn our decision based on the, you know, the perspective of an abutter that is frankly, just unenforceable, um, given the law of Massachusetts. And so I, again, I appreciate it, but I think that's the sort of where we are. So there really is no new information besides um, uh, Attorney Hill's letter and the Board of Health's vote of last week. Is that correct applicant? Uh, development team?
Uh, yes, I believe that is correct, Zach.
Uh, Andrew, I see your hand is raised. I don't know if you uh, have something to say.
Yeah. Thanks, Zach. I just also want to uh, bring your attention and the attention of the of the of the zoning Board of Appeals to a letter that I also sent in with photographs of what this driveway would look like from both our property and also the Natal's property. It's 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 quite a scar and uh, it goes the the entire length of our property. Uh, and we respectfully seek to have fencing and landscaping, so we're not looking at traffic and noise and dealing with noise. Anytime somebody drives on on that driveway. So.
I I respectfully, I I I agree, I I respect your uh, position and your opinion, Andrew. And I empathize with how you feel about this project. That being said, these are not health and safety items that are necessary or or conditions that would, you know, sort of allow the project to work. And so I just, I don't I I I'm personally not going to be comfortable imposing you know, certain landscaping plans in nonsensitive areas, just because I don't think we have the authority to do it. I'm sure Rick will tell me otherwise. If 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 I do. Um, but I I I would like to, you know, I I I don't have an executive order privilege. Uh, so I can't just, I can't just make things happen the way that I want them to happen. Um, that's not, that's not the tools that I have in my uh, in my tool shed right now. So.
Okay, I have a short comment, Zach.
Yes, Jonathan.
The developer has already indicated that there are some items in Mr. Hill's letter that are acceptable to him in his discretion. And I think that that's where it it sits. Let Mr. Murchison with consideration of the feelings of his butters over certain issues decide which ones are important are not important to him. And uh, make it, make a decision. I mean, doesn't come down to enforceability if the fee uh, consents to those conditions. I mean, I too was uh, winded by the eighteen page letter. I couldn't believe it, frankly. So I think that's that's where I would leave it.
Mr. Hill, I hope you don't take offense to my strong words, but um, I, you know, I do appreciate your advocacy, but I think if you're before us again, I hope we can whittle that list down to something that seems to be a little more on point. That being said, as I'm losing my voice, do I have a motion to close this public hearing unless there's any other comments or questions from the board or the public? Mr. Novak.
Chairman, I move to close the public hearing for Brush Hill Homes.
I second that motion.
Wonderful. Vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Yes.
Mr. Labby.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. McBride, I, uh, public hearing for uh, Crush Hill Homes uh, is closed. For deliberations, board members, um, I'm hoping that we can do something in the mornings now that uh, Mr. Novak and Mr. Fitch are, I guess, retired or enjoying the uh, the leisure time of their latter years. Maybe we can do a morning uh, deliberation session that makes it my life a little bit easier sometimes if it's like around eight on a Friday. But that's my preference for the deliberations. We can do maybe an hour, you know, a couple of Fridays um, to handle some stuff. Uh, that's my, that's my perspective.
I I have no problem with that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, early.
Yeah. So um, I Yeah. So I proposed that our deliberation on forty-one North Main and on Brush Hill, I, I don't know the address. I apologize, Bob. We'll, we'll commence this Friday at eight AM.
I'm unavailable, Mr. Chair.
Next Friday at eight AM.
That is vacation week. I'm also going to be out of state.
So Todd, we're burning some days here. So what, what's your first available? Gene, we don't have any meetings next week, do we?
No.
I can do it. We can do an evening next week, Todd. I know you're on vacation every night.
Well, more, mornings would be better than. How about the twenty-first, a week from this Friday? Does that work? Or is that too far out? Do we need to pull it up earlier in the week of the seventeenth?
We, we've got twenty days from when we close the hearing for both of them to render a decision. Mr. Haverdy will shout me down if I get that wrong.
So if we
But I think I have it right.
If we meet the twenty-first, we burned ten days.
Hold on. I got it wrong. Go ahead, Paul.
You, you have forty days from the close of the public hearing to render a decision.
To render a decision.
Correct.
I'm delighted to be wrong. Thank you, Paul.
Rendering a decision means you actually take your vote. And then from the time that you actually take your vote, you have fourteen days to file a decision with the clerk's office.
Thank you very much for the rolls.
You're welcome.
How about the twenty-fourth, the morning of the twenty-fourth? I can't do that. Vacation week.
Morning of the twenty-fourth. I could do the morning of the twenty-fourth.
That works for me as well. Do eight to nine on the morning of the twenty-fourth. And I have a, a bunch of people with trucks coming to irritate John by emptying out my barn.
I'll be gone.
All right. So
We'll put it all on your, we'll put it all on your porch. That's my plan.
Okay. All right.
All right. So the twenty-fourth at eight AM is when we will commence deliberations for forty-one North Main and for Brush Hill. Eight to nine, eight, eight to nine.
Would you like a motion?
I would like a motion.
I, I move that we schedule the deliberation sessions, the initial deliberation sessions for both forty-one North Main Street and Brush Hill Homes on the morning of Friday. No, is that Monday, February twenty-fourth?
Monday for Monday of twenty-fourth.
Monday, February twenty-fourth, eight AM.
Seconded it.
And that genie, and that genie post that.
Wonderful. Seconded. Vote by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Aye.
Mr. Labby.
Labby, aye.
Mr. Novak.
Novak, aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. And I can add a third motion. Motion to adjourn. I will move to adjourn this meeting. I do have a second.
Second.
Quick second. Mr. Fitch.
I vote yes, adjourn.
Mr. Labby.
Labby, aye.
Novak.
Aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Meeting is adjourned. I will talk to you all gentlemen on the twenty-fourth. Todd, enjoy your vacation.